Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm going to call the Chapua Library Board of Trustees meeting to order at 7:30 PM. Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Welcome.
Hello.
Good to see you back, Bill, from vacation.
Yeah, it was short but nice.
Good, good.
Is Joe on?
Yeah, I don't see Joe.
He's not on.
Okay. So I have Pam, Ronnie, Liz, myself, Nishat, Martha. Yeah, Martha, Dick, and Bill.
Correct.
Yeah, Joe is traveling again. He's with family. He said he might be able to make it. He might not, so.
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that right now.
He has.
Thank you.
Because I gave it to him. I sent it, confirmed it with him today, so.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so let's start with the approval of our August minutes. Thank you, Ronnie. It was a confusing month with multiple executive sessions and minutes, but I think we finally got them straight, so. Yes?
We had a paragraph in there that was extraneous still regarding the search because we didn't have a motion or a vote. And you guys left a paragraph in that you just should take out.
Where is it? Where is it?
The last, the last paragraph on the minutes. Let me pull it up.
I have it. I have it right here. President Wright asked Lain Che to update the board on the search committee.
Yeah, we need, we need that in there, Liz, for civil service purposes.
This September 24th.
Yeah.
Ronnie?
Yes.
People aren't able to get in. It says there, it's asking for a password.
Well, there are people watching, so I don't know why there, it says there are participants, so I don't know who.
Hi, Joe, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
We are.
Hi, Joe.
Hello.
You made it.
The first time I tried to sign on tonight, they asked me for, it asked me for a password, and I just closed out and tried again, and it didn't require one.
I didn't need a password to get in.
Okay.
Well, we, I guess we probably should have done something of a motion to get that on our minutes if civil service needed it, or we should redo that, whatever we agreed to back in the day, because it doesn't seem to be serving our purposes.
Okay, I don't know exactly what you're talking about, but this is just, I, I, this statement wasn't, we didn't move, and there wasn't a motion, so we can't go back and create a motion.
Right.
We just need to have that information on here for civil service. It's a little unusual, okay? We have to document certain things in our minutes and in our meetings.
I agree. So I think we need to revisit our policy of not documenting, because now we're, we made a rule that we weren't putting anything in our meetings, but apparently when we made that rule, nobody realized that there were going to be exceptions like civil service where we have to write things in. So I would rather we have, you know, like, that whatever we agree to doesn't need exceptions.
That's not possible, but we could try. All right, so we'll take it up at the next meeting then, okay, Liz?
It could be a simple.
Come up with a policy, come up with something.
It could be as simple as, in the event that something is legally required to be documented, it will appear in our minutes. Would solve for that without, you know, if you still wanted to keep it so tightly gated. But the way it is now, as we say, we're not going to do anything but minutes and motions, and then we do other things. It's an easy enough fix.
Are you, well, not with that exact language. I mean, I, so.
Yeah, all right, so we'll put it on the agenda for next month?
Right, right. Why don't you come up with the proposal, and then we'll put on the agenda for next month, okay?
Perfect.
In the meantime, are we leaving the paragraph so that we comply with civil service?
Yes.
Yes.
And.
What, what about the executive set? Do we have to blanket us except executive session minutes?
I've been putting the, I've been giving those to Teresa. I've been doing a separate set.
I know, but I.
Right, but our, um, in the past, we haven't, because our executive session minutes basically are, we enter executive session, we exit, so there's not much to approve.
Yeah.
All right.
I hear what you're asking.
And it's, it's pretty much said, you know, executive session for the purpose of blank.
Right.
Enter exit.
Be a record of that.
Right.
My point. So, like, the list that you sent me. So let's try to, we could, next month.
Right, we can iron that out next month, because this was a very unusual month, so.
I'm getting, I'm getting asked for pass codes for Zoom. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I don't know, there are plenty of people who it says are, are watching now. I don't understand. Oh, let's.
Well, okay, so folks who are trying to get into the meeting, this is a fix, but we don't know why it works. Try to exit what you're doing and try again.
Right, because I have.
And I don't know why that works, but it does.
I asked you to tell me who's having a problem, because I, I sent you a message if you could, because I see 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 people who have gotten in.
Well, somebody said, gave, they, they gave me a number and said, maybe that's it.
I don't know. If they clicked the link that was on the website, they shouldn't have a problem, because there are a bunch of people that are in.
Yeah, I know.
So just tell them to exit. I guess they can't hear me, can they? Because they're not in the meeting.
She can email them and tell her.
Just, yeah, tell them to exit and try again, and it, it's worked for me in the past, and it worked for Bill. I don't know why, so.
Right.
All right, so back to our minutes. So we are approving the minutes as written, correct? Thank you again, Ronnie, for straightening the minutes out this month.
Well.
Then we'll look into policies for next month.
Okay.
Next on our agenda is our long-range strategic plan, the new committee with Nishat chairing. Nishat, do you have any update for us tonight?
Um, I actually want to wait up on that once, you know, we get, you know, our new director and everything. I think that will be the best thing, once everything gets a little more settled, and then talk about it. But I did ask Liz to be on the committee with me, so it's definitely me and Liz on the committee, and.
Okay, great.
Great. That's great. And it's a good way to, we have the director, the assistant director, and so that's good. Thanks.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Thanks, Nishat.
You're welcome.
All right, Liz, you want to give us the notice with the proposed bylaw amendment?
Yeah, so the, the way the bylaws are currently written, they are, they are very top level, and this particular area that we want to address is actually one of the few places where we have detail. So it seems the, the best, the best option is to strike the, the detail so that we are consistent with the overall level of detail in the bylaws. And so we would literally be, we would be taking out language. So the language that we would be, the language we would be removing would be the sentence that says, "The library director is empowered to sign checks up to 1,000 in categories authorized by the board." And so it would be a deletion as opposed to writing something new from Section 3. And I think, I had said that we, I think technically we needed to notify the, the other trustees, make sure we were all aware that this change was coming, which we did at the prior board meeting, but I think everybody, for everyone's comfort, will wait and vote this change next board meeting, so that it'll.
Correct, right. This board meeting is, this meeting will serve as notice, because this is the first time you've actually said what the amendment will be, right? Like, literally. So we'll be deleting that, the proposal is to delete that sentence.
So we're.
And we will vote on it in October. Yes, Ronnie?
So we're deleting the, we have to say which article it's from, and.
She said Article 3, Section D of the bylaws.
It's not.
It's this, do you want me to repeat the sentence, or you're good?
No, I'm, I'm good. I just make sure we have. Okay, and so next month is when we'll officially vote on that.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So we're, just for, for my.
So in your minutes, yeah, in your minutes, you really just need to give notice.
Notice of proposal to amend bylaws, Article 3, Section D, strike the language that reads, "The library director," oh, blah, blah, blah.
Yes, correct.
With a vote in October. Okay.
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Great. Thank you all.
I'm sorry to keep saying this, but a lot of people are not, a lot of people are not getting in. I don't know if there's any way you can check the.
I, I just looked, and it all looks okay. I see 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 people are in. If you would send, I asked you to send me the name so I could see, and maybe I could send them the link.
Well.
Or do you have the link that you could send them, Martha? You have the link. I emailed it to you.
Well, it's not the link. It's, they're asking for a passcode to go with the link, so.
I don't know. All right, I'll go look and see if there is one, but I.
Can you ask one of the attendees if they needed a password to get in? So, any of the people that are, that are in the meeting, did they require a password, or did they just hit enter or something?
Yeah. So somebody said she got it off the library website, and I see we have 17 participants.
That includes you.
That's a lot.
There are nine panelists, then, and eight, there are nine panelists and eight attendees. So could I ask one of them to say how they got in, if I allow them to talk? Let's see.
Well, she said she got it off the website, just like you told her to, Ronnie.
Okay, all right, so.
So that worked.
Oh, okay, wait a minute. Somebody said she went to the events tab and clicked on the meeting.
Well.
Did that work?
And that worked.
Okay.
They're all saying they don't.
No password.
Okay, so.
So tell them to go to the, well.
I know, we're telling them like they're here.
They're writing to you, Martha. I can't, I love to tell them, but I can't, and I don't.
Go through the library website and the event site, okay?
Oh, there is, there is a passcode listed there.
Oh.
On the events page.
That's weird, because I didn't send that. I just.
No. I'm just, I'm, I'm logging in to see if you, if it's required or not.
Well, Denise didn't have to.
Right, 8 people got in. Denise, a whole bunch of other people got in.
Oh, God.
So.
This. Um, Ronnie, just, can you pop your meeting ID? Are we in 876-1719-0352?
I'm gonna go look. I have to go look at the.
I'm sorry.
It may be that there's two different.
Okay, what did you ask?
Okay, somebody else just got in.
Okay, good.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, 8796, that's part of it. That, I, I, I don't actually see that number. I have a different number for our webinar.
We're.
88.
Yeah, I, I believe that there's two different, there might be two different meetings.
No, there's only one webinar that I created, and I don't know what they, what, what they're looking at. Maybe it's with an old one. I'm not sure, but I.
Martha, I think your response, if people come in now, Martha, your response, I think it sounds like they just need to go to the website.
Yeah.
Tell them to go to the website.
Yes, the website, not the events page. Yes.
So we're up to 10, so 2 more people have added, so.
Right. All right, so somebody else is saying that she got in from the website with no problem, so.
Yeah.
All righty. Well, okay.
It's not the same meeting on the events thing.
Well, I, I know, I sent the link for the, that the people got into. I don't know where, what got put where, and.
All right.
It could be, was the meeting.
We, we obviously aren't hiding it if 10 people are in, so.
Right, right, okay. All right, so let's move on. Good. Let's move on to Dick's treasurer's report. Thank you, Dick. We received it.
As submitted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's look at the August 2020 statement, everyone. Do I have a motion to approve the August statement?
I'll move, we approve the August statement.
Thank you, Ronnie. Second?
I'll second that.
Liz? Any discussion questions on the August statement? No? Okay. All in favor of approving the August statement? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, unanimous. All right, let's look at the capital fund. Does anybody have any questions about the capital fund?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. Let's look at the September bills. Do I have a motion to approve the September bills?
Wait, did you need a motion to approve the capital fund?
No, we just review it, Lain. We don't approve it. We don't have a motion for that one. Hopefully, there wasn't one last month.
It was.
That's interesting.
We moved money.
We've.
No, there was a motion to approve review of capital fund.
Yeah, we don't usually do that, so that might have.
That comes out, okay.
That comes out. All right. So I need a motion to approve the September bills, please.
I'll move to.
Thanks, Lain. Somebody second that? I'll second it. Pam seconds.
Did I get it?
I did, Pam did.
Right.
Okay, any questions?
I have one question on the DEMCO, capital various furniture. Where did, because it's in non-budgeted, does that means it came from the capital fund, or the reserve fund, or, Joe?
It, it means, it means that it will be charged to the capital fund when.
Right, because it didn't, it didn't happen yet that it came off.
Right.
But, and then I also want to understand why, in the same box, under capital various furniture, capital roof repair, why, what is that?
Oh, you know, that, there's nothing there that, like, I could have just deleted the roof repair. That, that the, the amount for the furniture on DEMCO is the same as the total. That there's nothing on the line for the roof repair other than the total.
So the roof repair should be stricken.
There's nothing for roof, there's nothing there for the roof repair.
But, and it's on, on this, where it says amount at the bottom. Okay, so why is it even in the box? Why, why did you even put?
I, I didn't delete the text, that's all.
Okay, so it shouldn't, it should be, have been, it shouldn't be there, right?
It, it should just say capital, right?
The text for roof, roof repair not be there.
Right, it only.
The words roof repair should, should be there, should not be there. It should just say capital.
Right.
Correct.
Has the, has the, the name of the.
Correct.
Account.
It says DEMCO, capital various furniture. And that's, so capital roof repairs should be stricken.
It just should just say capital.
Just the text, yeah.
Say capital, it just.
It should, because it's the total of that section.
It's just the total of the.
Oh, okay, got it.
But I, but I did notice that we are a little bit inconsistent, where sometimes we have it totaled out, and sometimes.
We don't.
Sometimes we have a line, a white line for the total, and sometimes we have the fields populated. And I don't know, Joe, if that's just historically, when things were set up, how they were done, or if it's, I don't know what. You know, for example, building maintenance, we have a separate line item total, but if you look at, like, professional fees, you don't have a separate line item, but you do total it in the last box.
Right.
Probably for consistency's sake.
Because the way. It's just because of the way that it's set up in the Excel program that, you know, if there's only one line item to that category, I don't want to eliminate the, the, the line where the total comes in. That's all.
Yeah, I, I think however this spreadsheet was set up, there's a, there are some inconsistencies on when there's two lines versus one, so it's something that, at some, it's not catastrophic in terms of our ability to read it, but I think at some point, if we could standardize it down the sheet, that'd be awesome.
All right, I can do something to amend the, the format.
Great. That sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions on the September bills?
No.
No. All right, so all in favor of approving the September bills? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, unanimous. Okay, now we'll be moving on to the Bill Link Show. So, welcome back with a bang, Bill. So, let's see, why don't you start off? Thanks so much, Joe. Good night.
Okay, welcome.
Thanks. So, Bill, if you want to just give us a little background and remind us of everything, and then you have, you have the agenda. You'll, after that, you'll start with the BMS system.
Okay, so the BMS, that was a proposal that I neglected to get in on time last month. We have not had a PM on our building management system for 10 years. And it needs it. There's a lot of things that need tweaking. We're getting a lot of alarms. So I got a proposal from ACL, who is our vendor, and actually, they are a sole provider. I mean, there are other companies that can work on the end of a control system, but Automated Control Logic has all of our programs and all the ones that install the system, and they have all the code. So, in essence, they're a sole provider. They've given us, well, actually, I asked them for a fixed fee proposal, which you have in front of you. They also offered to do it on a, a time and material, but I, I think, at least on this one, since it hasn't been done in 10 years, we really do need a full, full, comprehensive PM. So I think I, I choose an annual PM with two visits, one before the winter and one in the spring. And then we can reevaluate next year whether we want to go forward with once a year, or take a couple-year break. But I think this year, right now, this is important to get this done.
This is the fire alarm?
No, this is the building management system. What this is, it controls all our HVAC equipment. Turn, you know, it, it sets.
Energy management system.
Yeah, okay.
Um. And is it now all tied in with the new equipment we've put in?
Yes.
Is there any, sorry.
I was gonna say, is, was the, was the failures that we had had recently had anything to do with the fact that maybe the system hadn't been PMmed in a while?
No, no. No, all those failures were due to the power problems we had this.
And we weren't the only ones. It was like a combination of power failure and humidity, right, Bill? That was.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was a rough time, especially, we had done what's called single phasing, where we lost, oh, we need three phases, three legs of power to operate the equipment. And we ended up losing one of those, so that three-phase equipment, which is electric motors, compressors, things like that, they can't run on two phases, and they end up either blowing a fuse, or burning out, or, or going out on an overload, so. And we had all of those things. We burnt out a motor, we, several overloads, so it was a number of things.
Does, how does the cost of this affect our budget? Like, well, is it essentially budgeted for, or will this create a savings that otherwise we would have paid? I mean, or is this another, is this $5,000 above what we, what our budget is?
This, this will be above what your normal budget is, I believe, but you do have an allocation for building services in there, so this.
Yeah, it's not, it's not necessarily outside of what we've budgeted, but instead of going by emergencies, we're potentially doing a maintenance, which may not get us out of the emergencies, but possibly, right?
Possible, and it may prevent future emergencies, yes.
Yeah, and I think we had, I'm just looking. Were we, we were underspending on that, I think, if I'm looking at our facilities. Building maintenance and repairs.
Yeah, I'm looking there as well.
Well, it's hard to tell, because now we're in the middle of a fiscal year.
Yeah, it's a new, so in the first two months, we spent 17%.
Which 16% would be two months' worth, plus or minus. So we're on budget, per se.
Yep.
Right. So this could, so to Lain, to your point, this could kick us over our allocation, yeah. But not necessarily because of this, like, the emergency stuff.
Yeah.
Arguably.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm a believer in PM, so I'm not necessarily against it. I'm just trying to make sure that we know that it would be above, you know, above our budget.
Yeah. I don't know how we, I don't recall how we finished last year in this category.
I think we were over budget on contract services and building maintenance last year.
Were we?
Yes. But anyway, all things considered, we had some expense savings in other categories, but we were, we're not, not so surprised, I think, to anyone, that we were over on building repairs.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we had a flood, we had, we had all sorts of stuff going on that I would anticipate.
Things.
Yeah. But the, the total list of equipment here, that's exhaustive.
On the proposal, let me.
Yeah, they're listing 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 5 items, I guess, or I, I don't know if those, if the, are those.
Those air handlers, five air handlers?
There's actually, let me just get to his proposal now.
Yeah, the five air handlers, and then it says boilers, but it doesn't specify a number, chiller. So I don't, I don't, I don't know the shorthand on the, on the right-hand side.
It's the, it's the, the five air handlers, and they all have a number of pieces of equipment associated with them. If you go to AHU4, which is the, the unit for the main library, there's a supply fan, a return fan, damper controls, heating valve controls, chiller controls, humidity controls. There's probably 40 or 50 control points in there.
So I'm just, I'm not, I, I think, I actually am, I'm, I've never, you know, contracted out for a building of our size, but the pricing to me looks very reasonable. What I'm trying to figure out is, from your perspective, is it inclusive of all of our equipment, or is there a holdout that this is everything but a piece? Or are we, we, is this comprehensive?
No, it's comprehensive. He's actually even included the, the new, the unit for the new construction and the new unit we put on the roof.
Okay, great.
We'll go over those controls as well.
Great. The only thing that I picked out of here that, I don't know if there's any room with them, but their office hour, like, their official hours are 7 to 3:30, and then anything beyond those hours is an emergency in their world, which has cost implications.
Yes.
And I don't know if that's standard to all of their contracts, or whether they're.
It's, it's an industry standard.
That's standard, okay.
Yes, and if it's an, if it's not an emergency, I tell them no all the time, which is.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the only, you know, for complete clarity, the only thing that is not included here are if they discover any parts that require replacement.
Right, yeah.
The labor's covered, but the parts will be charged.
So the labor for the-
Oh, I'm sorry, I misread it. May, in a service situation, ACL may charge repaired rates substantially lower for replacement parts. No, that's it, the labor's included, if he can use repaired parts, he will use them at a substantially lower price or he will put new equipment in. So I'm not aware of anything right now. I don't believe there are any damaged motor, you know, control motors, valve motors or anything like that, but he may uncover something.
Right, so, Bill, on, you said, I believe, this would be for two inspections a year, correct?
Yeah.
That's what this, right?
A one-year contract.
Right, so on the first page, unless I'm not, it could just be a cut and paste error or I'm not understanding. It says the scope of our PM inspections will be as follows, quarterly inspections.
No, that's incorrect, that's probably cut and paste.
Right, okay. So if, so if we're going to get to the point where we're approving this, we'll just need an improved version?
Corrected copy, of course.
Yeah, okay.
And there's also, it says August 2020 to August 2023. At the top, the subject.
Yeah, that's, that's-
All right, well, you know, I had asked them for an option for a three-year contract, but they gave us pricing for a one-year contract.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, if, yeah, I don't know if we would-
I'll, you know, I'll have him clean those up.
All right, Bill, that would be great, and then we can review it, I guess, next month and then like sign off on it with your recommendation.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much for that.
And we wouldn't want to do a multi-year to lock in these rates?
We haven't done it in 10 years, it's a good idea to do PM every year, but let's see where we go with it. You know, we may be able to skip a year if we do two inspections this year. Or maybe we'll be able to go to one inspection a year going forward. But let's get it up to snuff and then we'll take it from there.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill.
You're welcome.
All right, so what's next? The more information on HVAC?
We've got so much here and I'm just-
Right, I know.
I'm trying to get my screen back. Where? I'm sorry, just give me one moment.
Take your time.
I can't get back into the Zoom meeting, alls I can see is Pam. Okay, I've got, I've got-
We see you, okay, great.
Okay, the next thing, we have a lot of things.
Yes.
Do we want to talk about the parking lot?
You want to do that first and then get back to HVAC?
Oh, we can do the HVAC, I've got that right here, you saw my spreadsheet. It was a good call by the board to get proposals. Notice that Atlantic Westchester came in at $12,000.
Yeah.
And the other two were within $300, which makes me feel very good that they are at the right price. So it was 50% less than the quoted price, which I will most definitely let Atlantic Westchester know how displeased I am.
Well, would you go back to them and say, we got these, because we have other dealings with them, correct?
Yeah, I don't want to give them a-
It's good to keep them honest and let them maybe not win something, maybe.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, I don't want them to think that every time they're not the low bidder, I'm going to come running back to them.
Okay.
So this will be their lesson, hey, you bid way too high, you were 50% higher than the other bidders.
Really?
And that's it.
Right, and you, I'm sure you're pretty confident that they're bidding on the same thing, because-
Yes.
They should be, right?
Yeah, and they were very specific bids, if you-
Right, okay, good, right.
And I've worked with all these companies, I haven't worked with Lomastad probably in eight or nine years, but they were an excellent firm.
Good. All right, so tonight, do you need us to make a motion to approve the Armistead contract?
I'd like you to, but it's not critical, we've gotten through the summer. We will definitely not need this compressor until the spring. So if you want to sit on it a while, if you want to go for it now, it's entirely up to you.
How long will this bid last?
Right.
It's valid for 30 days.
30 days, so I got it today, so.
Right.
I'm going to make a motion to, to approve Armistead Mechanical Services to replace our KlimaCool chiller compressor in the amount of-
Eight thousand six-
Eight thousand 650 dollars plus any applicable taxes.
The motion has to be for, to authorize Martha Alcott to, because she has to sign this, so that's how you make the motion.
Okay, so Ronnie, if you want to make it cleanly, I'll second you.
Okay, so, right, so I move to authorize Martha Alcott to, what's the right word? Engage-
Engage. Engage.
In contract with Armistead Mechanical Services for the replacement of the KlimaCool chiller compressor for $8,650. How does that sound?
That sounds good.
I'll second that.
Okay, yay.
All in favor, or any discussion before we vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Bill, so we got that one done.
It feels good to be ahead of something, you know, really like get that air conditioning ready for next spring.
True. All right, Bill, do you want to address your library cleaning?
Yes.
That you want to put out for bid?
Yes, I, as I said, I don't think the library is as clean as it could be. So I wrote a specification, actually, I just rewrote a specification I had written a number of years ago. But it calls for, there's a section for per diem cleaning at the library, that's when one of your custodians calls in sick or is on vacation. So we'll have a set price for that, and I've given the scope of work for that. And then I've also written a specification for weekly deep cleaning of the library. And I give things that require weekly service, and then there are some things that require monthly service. And that, the contractors know what that's about, they've got to do the monthly stuff, they do a quarter of it every week.
Can I ask something? There's, there's, because this is an area that's bothered me that I feel needs to be cleaned, that nobody touches. In the main area above, near where the copying machine is, there's like a-
A sloped glass.
Slope, and that-
Horrible, yes.
Is just, I don't, I can't imagine what's there. So that's like the number one thing that needs to be cleaned.
That's actually what drove this whole thing. I noticed that, I started looking at other things around the library.
Always made me crazy, okay, thank you.
The one thing I didn't see, but it doesn't mean it's not here, remember we had that conversation about the drain in the bathroom and how if they don't, if it doesn't have water in it, it could be problematic?
David's been doing that, and-
So is that-
We will raise that again with the new contractor. I had raised it with, I believe it was SSC, was that Prisco's company? They left out some drain valves, some air gaps in there. And they claimed they put them in, I opened the drain and showed them that they weren't there. So we will get that now with the new contractor.
So that doesn't need to be something in the cleaning? Okay, great, thanks, Bill.
Yep.
Thanks for putting this together.
Yep, and then I also included something that we'll call out the price separately, but I've asked for once a month an electrostatic disinfection of the entire library. And I've asked for the specification of the type of equipment, because some of the equipment is more economical than others. I know when I had Arco, who has our incumbent contractor do it, if he used the Clorox machine, it was $3,000 to do the library. And if he used the Victory machine, which is a little lighter, it was $1,000 to do the library. So as long as we're still in COVID or the flu season, that may be something you'd want to consider.
Did, does the machine determine the size of the droplets? Or like is one less?
No, although the one is not as powerful, so you have to get closer, it takes a little longer to do it. But the Clorox, the initial charge in the machine is much higher.
Right.
I've actually, for other clients, purchased both machines. And the Victory machine, which is the handheld one, is somewhere in the range of $750. And the larger Clorox machine is about $4,000. And the materials are more expensive for the Clorox machine as well. So that's why the difference in his pricing.
Yeah, I mean, I think if the difference in pricing meant that it was less wet, then that means something in a library, but if the difference in prices branded versus unbranded, or then it's not important to us.
Yeah, well, I certainly wouldn't have him disinfect the collection. That's not recommended by the manufacturer or the ALA. So we just do surfaces in the library, bathrooms, desktops, all furniture, but not, definitely not the collection.
Yep.
And it would also include, it would also include an annual window cleaning, which hasn't been done in a long time, an annual carpet extraction, which I believe hasn't been done in, I think Pam told me it's been 10 years since we've had that carpet cleaned. I don't know, but this would include annual carpet and upholstery cleaning, stripping and waxing of all the tile floor surfaces. And as I said, the annual window cleaning.
Sounds good to me.
So what we can do is I can put it out to bid to three or four contractors, and, you know, we retain the right to reject any and all bids if we decide it's something we can't afford or we want to substantially change, we can always do that.
That sounds great, so I think, I'm sure, we're all in favor of you putting it out to bid, and then we'll see what we get back.
Very good, it'll probably be at least two months by the time I do the final writing, put it out to bid, get them to come look at it. And so it'll be difficult to get it done in a month, so.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
All right.
Bill, this brings up another question that occurred to me when you were talking, and Martha might want to pipe in on this one. But when we had that drain problem in the bathroom, right, the floor drain problem with the backup?
Yes.
And then DPW was wonderful, they came down immediately and checked it out. They opened up the manhole in the courtyard, and then that was all cleaned out by the plumber. But they told us that DPW recommended that we lift that manhole. Was it weekly, monthly, Martha, it was pretty often?
Well, they said-
General-
Yeah, the best would be weekly, but monthly would be okay too. But then I, you know, I don't know how David or how one person can lift that.
He could, he could, it wouldn't be right. The DPW doesn't go around and check every sewer main in the town once a week or once a month or probably even once a year. What I, I've already diaried it, but I'll just have that company come in once a year and do what's called a jetting, where they run high-pressure hoses through the sewer line, clean out anything that has attached itself to the sides of the pipes or any minor blockage. And that should be fine.
Okay, so that's your recommendation?
Yes, yep.
Okay, everyone comfortable with that?
Yeah, only one question for Bill on that, given the age of the pipes, are you worried about a pipe break if you jet them?
I'm sorry?
Given the age of the pipes, are you worried about a pipe break if you jet them?
No, not at all.
They're galvanized?
They're probably not galvanized. Oh, I'm losing it right now.
Okay, just one of those things, you gotta be careful when you jet lines.
Yep, okay.
That's great, thanks so much, Bill.
Yep.
Are you ready to move on to parking?
Yes, yes, I had Andy Tong come by, I believe it was last week, let me just find his proposal now. Okay, I'm sorry, it's going to take me, oh no, I just had it and I'm, darn it, okay, got it. Okay, so anyways, you've all seen the parking lot, it's pretty dismal shape. So I asked Andy Tong of Divney, Tong and Schwab, they're a civil engineering land use firm. I asked him to come in and look at the parking lot. And I see some opportunities there, I know the board in the past was interested in some environmental type proposals, especially green roofs. So there are some things we can do with that parking lot if we're going to rehabilitate it. We could do what's called pervious pavement in the parking lanes. It's where drainage is put under the pavement, the pavement is porous, so then any rain goes right through the pavement and doesn't run off into streams or sewers or whatever. So that's an environmental concept, we could look at the lighting, maybe put some LED lighting in the parking lot, maybe different style fixtures. We could put some cobblestone curbs. Right now, there's a combination of concrete curbs and blocktop curbs, they're all crumbling and cracked. And, you know, we could come up with a better spot for the dumpsters. It's not a welcoming sight when you're driving to the parking lot and you see those three big dumpsters up on the island. I think it's just an opportunity to really make that a nice welcoming entrance to the library. And I understand that that could be quite costly, so I've asked him also to come up with a plan, the bare minimum. What would we have to do to rehabilitate the surface of the parking lot and the curbs? And that's it, and then I asked him to come up with a middle-of-the-road solution. So as you can see, his price was $5,000 for site and program review, and that would be reusable when it comes to the design. That's, you know, measuring, getting accurate drawings, so that would be reusable. And then the concept plan, which again could be the start of the final plan, is another $10,000. I told him we would like to get this done by the end of the calendar year. We're going to have to do- We're gonna have to do something with that parking lot before winter really sets in. So I think it's something to think about now. And they're ready to jump on it right now. They're a very reputable firm. I don't know if anybody is familiar with them. I've known Andy Tong for a number of years. He was a trustee in the village of Briar Cliff Manor. He was very active in the Westchester Business Council and they're, they're a well-known firm.
So Bill, for the $10,000 concept parking lot improvement plan, they come up with one plan or is that where they would come up with like kind of the three plans?
Yeah, with sketches.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then you're saying do something now, but, but.
No, I'd like to try and get this done quickly. We may have to do some patching, you know, fill in some holes, but at a minimal cost, I think this, we'd, we'd want to get the paving done by the end of the year. Which is.
So this is just for him to come up with some concepts. This is the architectural piece of a new parking lot per se. And.
No, this is a concept. And then if we, although some of his preliminary work will carry through to the project, it will be another project for them to do the final design.
Actually.
And create construction documents.
Versus just simply having, having someone come in and do an overlay bang?
Yes.
Cause is that another option? Instead of having somebody go through $15,000 worth of construction designs to think about concepts? Could we simply just straight have somebody come in and do an overlay and paint, paint lines?
Uh, yes, but I think you'd still need a plan. Right now the parking lot is too high for all the curbing. If you walk around the parking lot, the minimum when you top the parking lot, the minimum you, minimum you can put on is two and a half inches of block top. In many cases, you only have three inches of curb exposed. And your curbing is not in good shape either. So you would either have to mill it down or build up new curbs. So it's, it's not as simple as, as a recoding.
Do we have to get any kind of state approval for this? Cause I know, wasn't there a whole big thing with the other parking lot that?
The other parking lot, and, and I have not checked on this yet, and I will. The other parking lot was new work. This, this would be considered a repair.
Okay. Okay. Just wanted to check.
And Bill, you think theoretically it's possible that if we approve this and they come up with a concept, there'll be time to actually put the actual construction out to bid and have it done before the end of the year? Is that what you're proposing?
Oh, yes. And that's, it's, it's very ambitious. I don't know if I can pull it off. But I'd like.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure I understood. I wasn't sure if we go through all this and then have the work scheduled for first opportunity in the spring.
He is ready to, and he says so in his proposal. I don't know the exact place, but he's ready to start immediately.
Right. I read that too.
Yeah, it's in there someplace.
Now, I know this, I mean, we have discussed this before. Probably with this board and also with bits and pieces of the last board. Cause I know that the problem is simple repairs of the parking lot aren't, aren't lasting either because it's in such bad shape.
Right.
So it's, it seems like it's, you know, I would suggest it is time to revisit it properly. But I see that it's, you know, it's not cheap, right?
No, it's not. And once he has his concept done, I'm sure he would be more than happy to come to a board meeting and, and present if we are back in public sessions or even on a Zoom session next month.
Now, when I look at the page for, the last page of his proposal, so we would immediately also have to contract with a surveyor? Is that, you're like, that seems important, right?
I didn't, I.
I mean, it just says things that aren't included.
Right. If we need a surveyor, if it meets and bounds survey. So if we do need that, which we probably don't, we have some plans of the original, the original parking lot around. And again, I don't know that he'd need utility mark outs and tree surveys. We may need a utility mark out because the main electric does pass under that parking lot on its way from the pole to the building. But that's not
That's not.
Tremendous amount.
Okay.
And I, we wouldn't need any test boring or, or any of the other things.
Okay. Well, I don't know how everybody else feels. I feel that this has come up so often that I'm, I'm ready to go forward with Bill's suggestion and this proposal. How does everybody else feel?
I agree. I think that it's time to get this done and done properly and, you know, move ahead. So I agree with you, Pam. And thank you, Bill, for getting this all together for us.
You're welcome.
What, what does he estimate the price? Like, what's the price range on the, on the, on the rest of the sort of thing? Cause I'm just wondering if we're, if we go this far, then we're gonna, we're gonna finish this project out. So understanding tonight, what we might want to set aside in a, you know, what we might want to pull out of the capital fund and put into the parking lot reserve, what, what would that number look like?
Uh, I don't know. His, part of his study is to prepare order of magnitude estimates, a budget estimate of the work.
And can Pam, do you remember what we paid for the back lot? Like, like?
No, it's funny. I don't remember that, but I do remember receiving a proposal to fix up or just simply repave this parking lot and it was $75,000. I remember that number because that seemed, well, at the time it seemed a lot for what I think they were offering to do. I don't want to disparage that proposal, but it seemed extreme. You know, I could, you know, we could easily look up that number, Liz. But it was also, it was much more, yeah, it was very complex because of the trees and the really forest and all that stuff too. So we'd have to pull that out of the cost.
Well, that, that's helpful because it kind of puts this number in a, in a context also, which makes me more comfortable.
Was, so are you saying that 75,000 you thought Pam though was just for the, the actual paving?
I think so.
And design and.
I don't think so. I don't, I don't wanna, I do not want to misspeak. I don't know if Martha remembers, but I think that is true.
I, I didn't see the proposal, but Pam told me that it was 75 or 76,000 just to put a top coat.
Right.
Yeah.
Curve work.
Right. I think so. We do have a copy of that proposal somewhere that we could try to dig up, but I think so.
Oh.
And, and I'm also, if we could afford it, you know, I am in favor because we are right next to that stream. There are so many flooding problems downtown Chappaqua. I doubt that we're going to be able to do a green roof or anything because I think that will be prohibitively expensive. But I'm certainly in favor of doing something that's a little more environmentally friendly over there in our parking lot.
I think you'll be shocked by the price difference. I just, to do something environmentally friendly versus.
Yeah, I know.
I guess I'm just a little, I mean.
I understand that. I.
I'm coming from, do we, do we need to spend this $15,000 or should we just go straight to bed from three different parking companies for a, a mill and overlay? I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out what this gets us other than, oh, these were nice concepts. And we end up at the end of the day doing a mill and overlay.
Well, whoever does the work is gonna have to do the first 5,000. Is, that's gonna be incorporated into somebody's bid. Cause you can't, you can't even, how do you even know what you're? I don't know. I feel like some of that work has to happen as part of the bid, but.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm, I just, it's, this. I appreciate somebody wanting to think through and designing concepts. I'm just not sure that what we don't need is just straight, a straight bill, mill and overlay by a parking company. And shouldn't we just go straight, get straight three bids for that?
Also need.
I, I kind of agree with Lane. Is there a way we can just get three bids from a construction company and see what they come out to and then have that in perspective of this 15,000, which the way I understand it is going to give us three proposals of concepts. And then on that will also tell us how much each proposal costs, correct?
That, that's what I heard. Yeah. I suggest, you know, proposed price for the proposals, right? Yeah. So ballpark figures, I guess.
Need more than.
I mean, the risk of.
Is it okay if I say something about this? I haven't said anything yet, if that's okay. I, the, we need more than just the parking lot repaved. There's all the curbs and a lot and, and such. So and the sidewalks around it need to be repaired. So it's a little bit more than just.
But your, your parking companies will do all that. Like, I mean, I guess I'm not sure. This is, this is hiring a designer to design it. If you just simply are gonna end up redoing exactly what you have, any of your parking companies and your concrete companies can come in and just did it. Because you're, if you're doing identically what's there.
Uh, it's not that easy, but yes, it could be done.
The, the challenge in doing it that way is that you're getting three bids based on three people's perspective of what they're gonna be doing. And there's no sort of blueprint, for lack of a better word, for what the expectation is. So as they, you could accept a bid and then a week in, oh, well, we didn't, you know, we weren't planning on removing that, but now that we see the grading is not, so like, it leaves a lot more margin of error in the bidding where you might get, your cost run might be higher later, I think. And so I, I think there is a benefit to having someone upfront scope what you then have different people bid on. But I see your point as to do we, do we want, you know, how big is the initial scoping? Cause I, we might say that we do want someone to scope out the design and incorporate all the areas. Cause to Ronnie's point, there's like weeds coming out of every crevice. The entire front area is, has some issues too. So I think there is a lot that could be specked, but the question is how do we gate the specking and, and how do we pick a construction company to do the work if we haven't somehow gated this? And you could say we can write a really tight spec, but I think I'm, I'm more, I'm sort of leaning towards either this proposal or a version of this to get us to where we have a defined plan that people can bid against. As opposed to having them define the plan as part of their bid.
And my, part of my, my thinking with, with going in this direction was I thought that the board might like to approve the appearance
Yes.
Of the library.
Yes, absolutely. And I thank you for this because I think that's also what you're thinking too, Pam. That this really, you know, we have this beautiful new area of the children's air room. We have the nice new parking lot in the back. We want it to look great. And, and, and so, yes, thank you. That's what I'm thinking. And I, I like this idea of doing it this way. Not just kind of likes, okay, we'll just pave the parking lot and poof, it's done. And then we still have all the other issues and it just doesn't look nice. So.
Is there any, listening to what everybody's saying, is there any way not to do both, but we could kind of do both if we delay it. So we could immediately ask for three bids or proposals from three paving companies to, and see what they would do. And, you know, Bill could just walk them around and show them. And once we have those three bids in hand, at least we maybe have a better understanding of the basic costs for just doing the parking lot and the curbs. And if we're not satisfied, whether we think they're too much or we then decide we want to go forward, then we engage the engineering company. I know that it's gonna delay everything, but maybe it's worth a bit of a delay. So we have more data with those three bids.
I like that idea.
What, what, what I could, I'd like to suggest is I have a paver that I've done a lot of work with. I know well, I could ask him to come over, look at it, and then just give me a budget estimate. So we know the ballpark of what we're looking at.
Okay.
We could probably do that in a couple of weeks. I could probably have that done.
Right. If, I think too, if necessary, if we do want to pursue this proposal and we for some reason don't or can't wait till our October meeting, we could call a special meeting. To just review the bid that Bill gets and to discuss this proposal again, if we're still trying to get it in under the wire for the year. With the weather.
The other thing we should all be thinking about is what are we willing to allocate to this? Because in our prior conversation, we talked about how it's a priority, that it has to get done. And it has to go, you know, it's gotta be ahead of the roof because it's literally in that poor of a condition. But we also, you know, so we've said it's a priority and now we just have to figure out how much money are we willing to put behind this priority? Because if we're just, you know, doing a repave to sort of get us through another cycle of the parking lot, so to speak, that's one, that might be the less expensive price tag, but we're not gonna have, so we've done the new construction. We've built the back lot. No one's put all these pieces together and we, and what I'm sort of highlighting and what Ronnie was talking about a little bit is that there are other, as you're coming into the library, not only is it, you know, the potholes are an issue, but that literally there could be enhancements to the whole entry that make it safer and more public friendly, maybe even visual cues for spacing that aren't, you know, like chalk marks on the curbs type, you know, so that I don't know. I just feel like there could be some value in having one person look at our entire exterior areas. But maybe when Bill gets us that estimate, we can go back to this, this company and, and sort of say, do you really need the $10,000 if our total budget on the solution is going to be in the neighborhood of, you know, whatever, based on where, what you, what we think is a reasonable budget for the project.
But he, he, when Bill gets this estimate, it's not going to be for what we're, we were just talking about. It's not just repaving. Is this, these people can tell you like how to, you know, the aesthetic things that we're looking at here, the, the possible. See, I, I just like this idea of having this, of getting this done this way and see what, what they come up with and then because I, I just feel we need to do this. So.
Well, I, I'd like to propose that we kind of do a little bit of both. I don't want to ignore this proposal that we have. It's good for probably 30 days. And I think if Bill gets us an estimate, we could get together in a week or two and discuss this. I think everybody should do some homework and look at our budget and think about how much money you think we could set aside. Well, I'll get the figures from the last parking lot. So maybe we'll just have more data.
Right.
And if we need to.
Bill, do you happen to know how many spaces there are?
In the new, in the old area, the front?
Yeah. Yeah. How many parking spots are?
Oh, you know, I counted them the other day and I can't remember. Oh, 44 maybe? Somewhere around there.
I think the additional considerations would be things like the, when you enter, it's, there's a very narrow pedestrian walkway. If we were doing stuff on the external facade, we might make that wider. You know, the walkway in from the street because it, it's, it's literally, it was narrow before and now for COVID, it's just not, um, it's way too narrow.
Yeah. And you really don't have any, uh, safe parking lot crossings if you park in the background.
Right.
You can't go across. You got to go around.
Well, I think we had talked about moving the handicap spots so that there's only one crossing for the handicap. So where the theater is putting them there. That was something that had come up previously. I don't, you know, I don't know if in, I don't know if these companies that would come in and do the mil, that, that will give us a quote, I'm sure they would include that sort of thing, or would they require us to have a plan?
Uh, usually they require some kind of plan. In the past, when I've done things like that, I, I hire, uh, the striping people separately. I know some strippers around. And then, you know, I could have them lay out the parking spots, but. Yeah. When you use a, a company like DTS, they, this is what they do. They know how to arrange crosswalks and parking lots and parking spaces.
Yeah. I mean, to me, the price tag seemed very reasonable based on the bid that, you know, that we're saying it's in the $75,000 range for a, for the lot, for the work. Then the planning portion seems reasonable. But, you know, I'm, I'm fine to meet when we have more information. Let's.
Okay. Well, let me get the bare bones estimate and you know, I, I can talk to him about doing a couple of other things that dress it up a little and I'll get back to you.
That would be great, Bill. Let's do that. And then, like I said, everybody do some homework on this and we can always get together in a couple of weeks and have a special meeting so that we don't let this languish.
Great.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill.
All righty, you're welcome.
Pam, can I, can I, um, can we talk about toilet lids again? Bill and I had been talking about that.
Yes.
I don't know if anybody had a chance to read the Washington Post article. But it's, it's pretty gross and I think we really need toilet lids. I think it's really safer. And I, I was talking to Bill about it. I think we could do it pretty inexpensively. I mean, you were saying, Bill, it would cost about $50 a lid.
Well, that's, it's $55 for the lid and then to get someone to install it.
Right.
So maybe you're talking 120, 125 dollars a lid. So I would estimate under $750.
And I just want to remind everyone, last month when we brought this up, everybody said no one would touch the toilet seat.
I didn't say anything about it because I'm in favor.
I didn't say you did. I said.
You said.
People, did I say everyone? Okay. Somebody or multiple people, enough people that we did not get new toilet seats. How about the majority? The majority of people said they would not touch, I'm just reminding us, would not touch the toilet seats. There was also issues, I believe, on the automatic flushing bill. Like it wouldn't work.
Well, it's not, well, unless you put the seat down.
Down. Right.
Okay. All right.
I would much rather touch a toilet seat than have stuff going all over the air and having, breathing it in. So.
I, I'm in favor of toilet seat covers. That, I mean, toilet, yes. So there you go.
I don't think any of the concerns with toilet seat lids go away. The science is a science and absolutely without a lid, you get spray and you get particulate in the air. The question is whether having the lid actually does anything to, to prevent that in, in a consistent way. And I think that's really where we sort of netted out was we didn't think that, that we thought there would be more risk of things staying in the bowl. Then
Right.
That that would be the, the fallout would be there'd be stuff staying in the bowl as opposed to someone putting the lid down. I would say for the staff bathroom, we definitely should put a lid. I can't imagine that, that we would have an issue with staff not, not taking good care of each other. And I don't, and their bathroom still is, is, it doesn't, it's not a, it's old school.
Well, we have a lid in there.
Yeah. So I feel like the conversation really that we're having is in public restrooms. Whether we want to make a change. And so it goes back to the trade off of you introduce a lid, you decrease potentially the willingness of someone to flush, right? Cause the lid needs to go down in order for it to flush.
Right, right.
So that's basically, uh, you know, where we netted out last time, I was on the side of, don't put the lid because you're going to end up with stuff in the toilet. But I, you know, maybe just like we're getting compliance on mask wearing, we can, we can get better compliance in the bathroom. I don't.
And put signs in the bathrooms telling people what to do, you know? Put down the lid and press the button.
Right. When, when are we even allowing patrons to use the bathrooms?
Well, we aren't yet.
Exactly. We're not letting people even use the bathrooms now to begin with. So we're paying for something we're not using if we put them in. Having had lids put in my office restrooms with automatic flush, it's very annoying. For, for the reasons Liz has mentioned. So having, dealing with it directly, um, my personal opinion is still no lids because I don't, well, I trust adults maybe even to flush appropriately. I don't trust everyone. And, and it's not the money for me on this case so much as it is ensuring that things flush. Because I think some things flushing and a little particulate is better than no things flushing at all.
Okay. So maybe we don't talk about this until we let people use the toilets.
Well, I, I mean, if we're going to make a change for the benefit of the people that are going to use them, it would be nice to do it before they got there.
Okay.
I, I think basically the particulate eventually comes down. So we could also, it, it really depends on how frequently the toilet's being used as well. Right?
Cause gravity works.
Yes. So, I mean, I would say at this point, we're not, we're not offering bathrooms and the frequency of utilization, if we were to start offering bathrooms would not, I don't, I don't think it would be that great.
Can we, um, find out what the schools are doing? The schools are back in session. I know the kids are going to school as far as I know. But I could be wrong. Um, I don't think there has been any change in how the school bathrooms are set up. Is there a way for us to find that out?
They're just limiting. We, we can certainly ask, but from my understanding, they're limiting the, that only one child can use the bathroom at a time.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
Well, only one person can use our bathrooms at a time too.
Exactly. Yep.
And we all didn't die of everything else that happens when you flush the toilet before COVID. You know, we, we need to not think of everything as just being in COVID world. Because there will be a time where COVID will still exist, but it will exist like everything else in the life, in our lives and every other virus we come across.
If I could just add one thing, you would also need to consider who is going to, lack of a better term, clean up the mess when the custodian's not there. Who's going to go in and put down the seat and flush the toilet when someone doesn't do it? Is it going to be a librarian? Uh, who is it going to be?
Probably a librarian, yeah.
Right. Is that what they wanted to?
It'll be the director.
I mean, it's interesting. It'll put them in the bathroom many more times than they would normally be in that bathroom where they would never normally enter that bathroom. But now it'll be perhaps part of their, of the expectation that they're constantly in that bathroom checking in. It's, it's tricky. I'm also, you know, I'm looking at the article. It was the Washington Post article from September 1st, right? Right. And it's the same gentleman, associate professor, who wrote the article in February. So I'm not saying this isn't a real thing, these bio aerosols. I'm not denying that. But it does seem to be one particular person so far continually to put it in the forefront. It could be something that's very important to him. Like I said, I'm not denying that it's true, but I don't think that we need to jump just because one person has repeatedly written an article in the Washington Post.
But the Washington Post had decided to publish it, so they must feel it's worthy of, of people knowing about this. And I think that, I don't know, your, your argument is, um, you know, I, it's.
It did, this article didn't, it's not in six newspapers. That's all I'm saying. It's one.
Have we, have we researched toilet seat articles?
Not at all.
You can't, you, you don't, you know, maybe we could do that, but I'm in favor of toilet seat covers. I'm just lids, so. And if this, you know, it's honestly, it's less than a thousand dollars or even $2,000. So if they decide, the staff decides it's the best thing, then they can go ahead and do it. And it.
Okay. And if we have to hire another custodian full-time to watch the toilets, and I'm just throwing these things out as devil's advocate. It's not whether I'm in favor or not. But I'm just want it to be thought through. That's all.
I mean, it, there's nothing more offensive than going in a bathroom where the toilet has not been flushed, in my opinion. So hence I lean heavily towards making sure the toilets can flush themselves. But again, I appreciate that, that it is a liability as well. There is particulate that goes in the air. I just think that in a public situation, the public is trying to social distance and I know, I don't think we have a, a bank of stall of, you know, that separate bathrooms now. Many of our public might not have even seen it yet. But we no longer have our tightly spaced cubby configurations down there. We have three separate beautiful private bathrooms. So I think we would have enough time between usage as well for things to settle. But if we get back into programs, maybe that changes. I don't know, you know, how easy or hard these things are to take on and off. Like if we had an evening program and we knew we were going to have a lot of bathroom traffic, um, would we, you know, would we be able to put them on and then, or it's too much install?
That's, that's, that's a lot of work. Yeah. You're talking about having a custodian there to insert, knock certain toilet seat lids.
Well, and we wouldn't have a program with a lot of people when that.
By the time you have a program with a lot of people, the concern over COVID will be substantially less.
Right. Exactly.
And then there'll be a non-issue.
Right. Well, I know the staff were concerned and they wanted to bring this up again. So thank you for.
Martha, did you say that the staff bathroom already has a lid on the toilet seat?
The staff bathroom does. Yeah. The one near the, um, the staff room, the, the kitchen area.
Yes.
Yes.
And so are they using the other restrooms?
What?
Do they use the other restrooms?
Yes, they do.
All right. Well, the, I mean, a time like, say, gravity does work. If you're concerned, use one that hasn't been used in a while.
I don't know what the answer is. I mean, I don't know what the answer is. I don't, I want to do the right thing, but I don't want to, um, also do something.
It's like a lot of things with COVID, you don't know what the answer is. But you don't.
So what do folks want to do? Do we delay this discussion again and bring it up again next month after we all, I mean, I.
I don't know that we have a unanimous decision here.
No, I don't think we do.
Right. I don't think we do.
I'm going to do research on this.
Perfect. Let us know what you come up with.
Good. All right. Thanks, Ronnie.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay. So then if we're finished with toilets and we've finished with buildings and grounds, unless anything else has come up, uh, we can go on to Martha's interim director's report.
Okay. I'm going to say goodnight.
Thanks for all your work, Bill.
Take care.
All right.
Thank you. Okay. Um, in anticipation of my upcoming retirement, I have appointed Rebecca Rogan as head of reference effective nine, seven, 2020. And I'll be adjusting Rebecca's salary to reflect her additional duties, um, as well as an automatic 1250 stipend for department heads. Her current librarian two salary will also go up by $5,000. There is money in the fiscal year 2021 salary budget to accommodate this increase.
That's great. I know we're all happy about.
So wait, do we need a motion to accept?
You need a motion. I just want to go over the amounts and I'll be happy to make the motion. So her new salary will be six, that 69,009.
No, it'll be 71,161.
You don't want to, well, I was going to say, do you do it in two parts because of the 1250? Cause I don't know how, when we break it out in the, um.
Oh, in the budget.
Yeah, but I'm willing to go with the total. Cause it's 69,91. Because let's say at some point, like this is her current salary, the 69,9, 69,911. Let's say at some point we would change the stipend. We still need to get her salary for like future, you know, percentage increases.
Right.
I think we need to break it down and say her, her, her point, her new salary would be 69,911 plus the 1250 stipend for the department head.
Right. And that, that is how it's done in the budget. You're right.
So that's why I think we have to say it that way. So I move that we approve the appointment of Rebecca Rogan as head of reference effective nine, uh, September 7, 2020 at the librarian to salary of 69,911 plus this automatic 1250 stipend for department head.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
And, yeah, congratulations. I don't know if Rebecca's on.
No, she's not. She's in Cape Cod right now. So.
Well, as she should be.
Flashing from Cape Cod because I think I see her, um, her on here incognito.
No, we're really happy. I, she's ready for this. She's, she's been a, a really valued staff member for, for many years. And I think she'll be really great in the job. So.
Be really great.
That's wonderful.
Thank you, Martha.
That's great. Thank you.
I also, there were a couple of other things. Well, you, you all know that we're open on Saturdays now. We were open last Saturday from 11 to three. Also, we were able to do, to pull some of the statistics and the, I mean, I know WLS, you know, we're always a little suspicious of their statistics, but it turns out that our, uh, the circulation of all materials is at 84% of what we were at last year at this time. So that's not so bad.
That's, that's great.
And, yeah, I think, well, I mean, part of it is the people we're not serving are the people who like to come in and hang out in the library. They tend not to take books out or any materials out. They just like to be in the library. But the people who do, uh, check books out and other materials are, are finding us and they're using us, which is great. So I'm happy about that.
That's great.
And that's all I have for now.
Did you want to address the ongoing construction? Just, uh,
Oh, yeah.
Did you want to address the ongoing construction? Just tell everybody that.
The, the construction crew has been in working, you know, chipping away at the, at the list, the punch list. And it's looking pretty good. They had to, they had to order more hardware for the doors, so they're waiting on that and somebody was in, a window guy was in today. They have to put some windows in some of the areas yet, so that's moving forward as well. So little by little, they, they did have to, they had to order some material for the outs, for the exterior, so that's going to take longer. But they are going to come in and clean up. They'll put, they'll put something out. They'll kind of fix it up with, with other materials while they're waiting for the, the permanent materials and they're going to take the fence down and, and plant grass and make it, make it look nice, so.
That'll make, that'll make a huge difference instead of that plastic flapping in the breeze constantly, right? It's so sad.
It is.
Do you, do you, did they give you a timing for when they're taking the fence down?
No, the only timing they mentioned was, I mean, they're hoping to have CFOs by the end of October. I mean, the end of September.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, well, we'll see.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully. In the meantime, are you monitoring the, the exterior stuff to make sure that nothing ends up on the curb or that, you know, that they're keeping it neat and, or who's, who's like responsible for that?
Well, Joe Grimando's in charge of that. I mean.
Right, that's his job.
Right, so I don't, Lane, have you, like, does he come through or, you know, how's, how's he kind of overseeing everything?
He went through with the construction people, right? They haven't really done anything on the exterior yet, right? But everything they are doing to date has been inside.
Right.
So none of that should be moving around yet.
And they're coming in through the, through the library entrance then?
No, they're coming in through the, the entrance in the new children's room.
Right, which is behind the, so that, so they have to move the gate to get in every time, right? Like.
I guess. I don't, I don't, I don't really know.
I don't know. I just, from a safety standpoint, well, it's again, an active site where it hadn't been. I, I know our prior director was very active in monitoring everything, monitoring the building, the exterior. And I just want to make sure that, that we're not missing that role of that, you know, to make sure that when the construction guys leave at the end of the day, I know you're not always on the schedule or not, you know, that, that we make sure we're sort of making sure that they're leaving our perimeter in good shape.
No, I can do that. I can check that every night.
Thank you.
All right, Martha, thanks so much. I know you have a lot on your plate, but you've been doing fantastic. So I just want to thank you again for taking this job on.
Well, thank you, thank you.
It really is, makes a huge difference to all of us and to the staff too.
It's, it's been challenging, I have to say.
I bet, yeah. Even after all those years at the library, right? It's amazing, so, all right. So anything else in your report that you want to add or you're all set then? I think you covered everything you had. I didn't know if anything came up.
No, no, I think I've covered everything.
All right, thanks so much. Next on the agenda is the president's report, which I like to keep there as my space holder, but I don't have anything to report. So now we can go on to our search update and Lane will address that.
Right, the, as I think we're all aware, search committee provided candidates for the board to review. The board has been reviewing those candidates and hopefully we'll have some good announcements in the very near term.
Thank you, thanks. That's great, thanks. Policy committee, Liz or Ronnie who wants to speak or both of you?
I'll start and Liz is going to chime in. So the policy committee, you appointed Liz and me and we have formed a committee so far. Robin Friedman from the children's services will be as part of our committee. Miriam Safran from the reference. And Martha has graciously agreed to work with us. We ultimately plan to include the new director and new assistant director and we're hoping to have someone from CIRC join us because our may, our first goal is to work on the pandemic policy. We also spoke about the, we met last week, we're meeting again Friday. We spoke about the bylaws, which Liz already took care of earlier this evening. And what we're doing now is we're reviewing pandemic policies. Martha has asked other libraries to share theirs. Robin is researching the ALA resources available. So we will be working on that. What we do want to do is there was the financial policy that Lane and I pretty much finished months ago, but COVID got in the way. And I, I'd like to ask that we send that to the board so that we can review it at the next meeting and, and and hopefully adopt the changes to the, to the financial policy. Liz, do you want to add anything?
I, I think you said it well. We're, you know, one of the things is we're also beyond ALA, looking at the other library systems in our immediate area like Rockland and, and making sure that Mid Hudson, looking at what other people in our vicinity are doing as well as ALA. And so we're meeting 1 o'clock Friday if anyone wants to send us anything prior to that meeting. And then we'll come back, obviously, you know, Ronnie and Lane had worked on policy previously and had a outstanding policy. But the, but the, you know, the main thing we're, we're working on and front loading is the pandemic policy as we had all agreed and discussed last month.
We're not really, we, we're not doing any more work on the financial policy because really the work that Lane and I did kind of is, is basically complete. It's just a matter of the board reviewing it. So I, you know, hope that we can do that next month. So basically that's it. Does anyone have any questions for us?
I did want to mention that Ann Lim from the circulation department has agreed to be on the committee as well.
Okay.
And she is currently a library student.
Oh, good. And I will send her all the documents that I've been, we've been sharing, so.
Great, okay.
Thank you so much, Ann, for joining us. I really think it's important that, you know, we have a cross section of the, of the library staff because their input is so crucial to this policy. And I'm really glad that so many people have stepped up. I know everyone has so much going on during the day and working so hard in, in this new and new normal. So we're, Liz and I are both very grateful to have the, their voices heard. So, thank you.
Thank you both very much. So we look forward to hearing more and, yeah. Make sure you get us the, the final, final, final version of the financial policy, especially Nishat hasn't had a chance to see it yet. We all have reviewed it and this way we have time to review it before October.
Oh, I will, I'll send it to you this week because we, Lane and I had looked at it in, in May and we, it was ready to go, right, Lane?
Yeah, I believe so, yep.
So, yeah, I think so.
That last draft, so, so I'll be sending it to the board. Okay.
Great.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, so we have tied up our business, but now's the time in our meeting where we invite public comments and questions. So does anybody have a comment or a question?
From the public?
I see chat looks pretty quiet. That's where they'd come in, right?
Right. Well, I don't see any hands raised.
Right, nor do I, okay.
Ready to allow somebody to speak if they want to.
Okay. All right, so then I'd like to move to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second? Okay, Nishat, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So our meeting is adjourned at 9:11 PM. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Lane, for taking the minutes.
Yes, thank you, Lane.
And we'll see everybody next month and some of us before next month, so.
Right.
All right. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night, Dick. Take care.
Good night.
Good night.